Hey, Robin just sent me a message and said she's having trouble getting connected, but she's still trying.
Okay, alright. We'll watch for... Okay, I have five o'clock, so I will now call this Planning Commission meeting for the month of December to order. And at this time, can I get you to do a roll call? Amber?
Yes. Wendy Birmingham?
Here.
Robin's on the way. Phil Chancellor?
Here.
Jana Jaeger?
Here.
Mac Lazenby?
Here.
Marcus Marshall?
Here.
Warren McCord?
Here.
Nanette Reese? Bob Wrightenbaugh?
Here.
Alright, before we get started, I just want to kind of go over the rules of the meeting and how we proceed through this, through our agenda. And so the commission's going to be presented with agenda items by the planning staff. And then also a representative for that particular agenda item, if they are interested can have an opening comments as well. And then, once that's over, we're going to open public hearings for those items that require a public hearing. And that's going to be your opportunity to speak on that agenda item is at that time. And I'd like to ask you to please keep your comments to five minutes or less. Once everybody has spoken, I will close the public hearing and then we will deliberate, have motion and vote on the, on the item. The commission's going to vote based on state laws, the city's comprehensive plan 2030, and for the general good of the, of the public community. Having summarized the, the basic approach we're going to take in, you know, trying to execute our agenda here, I also like to make a point about subdivision plats, although I'm not sure if we have any now that I think about that. But I'll go ahead and make the point anyway, subdivision plats. Our role as a, as a planning commission is directed by Alabama statute. And it says that the, the planning commission is the final approval authority for these plats. With regards to plats, the commission acts as an administrative body and is bound by the limitations contained in state laws, the zoning, or city zoning ordinance, subdivision regulations previously adopted by this commission. And while public hearings are required on each plat, we welcome any and all public comments on that. Please understand that the commission's authority is strictly limited to confirming that the plat meets or exceeds specific requirements that are codified in laws and the other regulations I just spoke of. And then the fact that we're on a, on a Zoom meeting, if you're an attendee and would like to speak during the public hearing, the, the way we'll do that is you have a, you have a way of raising your hand electronically on the Zoom application. And once we get into the public hearing, I will be looking for those raised hands and we'll call on you. And when I do that, I can turn on your microphone so that you can speak. Alright, so at this time, the first order of business is citizens communication. This is a time where you can speak on, there's two basic categories of things that we want to speak in on in the citizens communication. One is anything that's not on the agenda. Okay, so if it's not on the agenda and you have, you would like to speak, you know, please do. And then the other thing is that if it's on the consent agenda, this is the time to make any kind of comments you would like to make on any of the items that are on the consent agenda. And there are three different items in, in the consent agenda plus our meeting minutes. So at this time, I'm going to open the public hearing for citizens communication. Anybody like to speak? Okay, I'm seeing no one. Okay, so we'll move on to the consent agenda. The consent agenda tonight consists of three different items and in addition to the approval of the packet meeting minutes and the regular meeting minutes as that have been corrected during the week. The first item would be the Gibson Annexation, PL 2020-00653. Item number two is the Dakota, which is a waiver, waiver to subdivision plats, and that's PL 2020-00657. And the third item is Yarborough Farms Pine Valley, which is PL 2020-0658. Would like to ask the staff to present if you have, if you will.
We discussed the consent agenda at the meeting on Monday, but if you guys have any questions on either of the items, I'd be happy to go over those with you.
Okay.
I have a question about the ownership on item one. If those parcels were under the same owner?
No, sir, they are not the same.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Okay, do I have a, a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the three items on the consent agenda and including the packet meeting minutes of the night and the regular minutes as adjusted on November the 12th.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion in the second. Are there any other, is there any further discussion on the consent agenda? Okay, so all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
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 Any opposed, say no? Okay, the consent agenda carries. Alright, so let's move into new business. Alright, the first item on new business is item number four, Chapel Heights, PL 2020-00643. And it's a recommendation to place a conservation overlay district on 81 acres. And Mr. Howell, over to you.
Yes, sir. So the rezoning request does involve the placing the conservation overlay district on top of land currently zoned rural that consists of approximately, approximately 81 acres and is located at the 1700 block of Pierce Chapel Road. As you can see on the trax map here, this is looking the, the far southeast of town along the, along Pierce Chapel Road, just east of Society Hill Road. It's not shown here, but as you, as you can see the line of the city limits right here, the boundary, approximate boundary of the the road boundary runs along the south edge of this property and those next to it. So this is on the, on the extreme edge of town. Areas north of it also have a conservation overlay district as a result of the 103 water shed. This is the area that's to be rezoned, highlighted in red, as you see here. There's a large amount of wetlands that run through the eastern side of the property. And it has connection to Pierce Chapel, on two points, and then also Lee Road 27 down here. This is the concept plan that shows the layout of the, the proposed layout of the homes. And we'll get into the analysis of that here in just a second. Conservation overlay district is used by the city of Auburn to encourage the conservation enhancement of particularly natural resource environments. They also include the encouragement of more efficient forms of development that consume less open land and conforms to existing topography and natural features. One requirement of using a college, excuse me, of a conservation overlay district is that it be taken continuous acres, maybe one acres, makes that conform here. It also is requires 50% of the gross area to be, remain as open space. And this proposal includes 53 and a half percent of the gross area, so that conforms. Density is determined by the underlying zoning district, which is rural, which would allow for a total of 27 residential lots on 81 acres total. And this proposal includes 27 residential lots. Districts with this designation must conform with the city plans and policies. And the staff feels that the request here satisfies that criteria. The creation of this district meets the future land use designation in rural and the presence of wetlands in the area depicted as open space would be preserved in this, with this rezoning. As such, staff is recommending rural. We have not received much correspondence, however, we did receive one. One in opposition to from the Belterra, a resident of the Belterra subdivision, who was, as far as we could tell, was concerned about a potential precedent set for area in the county. The applicant's representative was online and the staff is ready to answer any questions you may have.
Who's, who's the?
Hey, I'm sorry, you guys. Could you, I did not hear the part about the objection very clearly. Could you repeat that, please, sir?
Yeah, so the objection was made by a resident of the Belterra subdivision that's to the west, that's separated from the subject property by a large portion of the land that's in the county. Is, they were concerned about potential for other conservation overlay districts. However, we believe the area that they were concerned about is currently inside the county and is also outside of the, of the boundary.
I got you. Thank you.
Mr. Basquen, would you like to make any comments?
We'd be happy to answer any questions.
Alright, thank you. Okay, this requires a public hearing, so I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing at this time. Anybody that would like to speak, please raise your electronic hand and we will turn on your microphone. Okay, Nicolette Peters. Alls you have to do is unmute your microphone and you can speak. I think. Are you, if you're speaking and we can't hear you?
Can you hear me now?
We can hear you now.
Okay, my name's Rusty Peters. I own the five acres where the access road meets Pierce Chapel. Yep, right in there? Yep, right there. I own that right there.
Okay.
Um, I guess, I'm not sure how it all will affect me and what will be, I guess, is that the only access road they're going to use to go in and out of there?
Uh, we'll, we'll ask them to address that.
Okay.
Yeah, go ahead and give us what you're concerned about and then we'll have it all addressed.
Um, I guess, I'm just not sure about it. I don't know. I, I guess I don't know the correct answer or the correct question to ask.
Well, go ahead. What, what's the, you know, what's bugging you?
Uh, just, just the traffic coming in and out. I know the access road butts up against mine and I'm just wondering is that, is that the only road that's going to come in and out of the place?
Okay. Um, alright, and one, one other thing real quick, I forgot to ask, whenever you speak at the public hearing, I'd like to ask everybody to give, you gave your name, but can you give your address as well, please?
Yes, sir. 1788 Pierce Chapel.
Okay, so we're, we're looking at access. Okay, so we'll, we'll, we'll have the, the developer or the staff address that in particular. And that's, was that it?
Yes, sir, that's it.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, is there anybody else that would like to speak? Alright, seeing no one, uh, let's go ahead and a, a, address Mr. Peters' concern. What is, what's the, is this the only access? And it is, are, are there future plans that may, that may change in the future? So either, Mr. Basquen, maybe that's a, you could probably start with you. Do you have a, understand the plan on this one?
Yeah, we're showing access coming in off of Pierce Chapel Road. There's another access point to the east of, over off of Lee Road 27. But primary access into and out of the subdivision will be off of the drive there on Pierce Chapel.
So the second one's down here on the, the bottom right-hand side, right?
Yeah.
That's an access to the development?
No, it's not an access to the development, it's access to the road. It'll be to access the other side of the property because there's a creek that separates this property. So there's, that's the other access point to get to the other side of the creek if you wanted to drive over there.
Okay, but in and out of the the development itself is a single road?
Yeah, for 27 home sites, yes.
Okay. Alright, thank you. Commission? Comments, motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd move to approve item four of the agenda.
Second.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Alright, Amber, can you give us roll call vote, please?
Bridges?
Yeah.
Chancellor?
Yes.
Jaeger?
Yes.
Lazenby?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
McCord?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Wrightenbaugh?
Yes.
Birmingham?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Moving on to item number five, this is the SIO distribution center. Ms. Robison?
Yes, sir, good evening. This is a request to subdivide the existing property where the SO2 manufacturing facility is located. And on that property, construct a distribution center for the vials that are being produced at the manufacturing facility next door. The distribution center is approximately nine, 90,000 square feet. And an administrative subdivision plat is in the works. And we do recommend approval. I have not received any communication on this case. And we'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Uh, is the applicant of, interested in speaking?
Their representative is on the meeting, whoops.
What's, what's the person's name? I'll just, I'll just ask him whether he wants to speak.
Alan Parker or Terry Doyle?
Alright, let me, hey, Alan Parker, I just enabled your mic. If you, this, if you unmute, you can, if you want to ask, provide any information you can, otherwise we can move along.
Okay, I just unmuted.
Okay. You have any comments you'd like to make on this, or do you want to just go ahead and move on?
Just move on. I have no comments. Be glad to answer any questions.
Okay, great. Appreciate it. Thank you. Okay, this requires a public hearing, so I'm going to open the public hearing at this time and ask anybody that would like to speak to please raise your electronic hand. Okay, I'm seeing no one. So I'm going to close the public hearing and ask for further conversation or a motion from the commission.
If no one's gonna say anything, I'll make a motion to approve of item number five with any and all staff comments.
Second.
Have a motion in the second. Is there any further deliberation by the council that's necessary? Okay, Amber, can you give us a roll call vote, please?
Bridges?
Yeah.
Chancellor?
Yes.
Jaeger?
Yes.
Lazenby?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
McCord?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Wrightenbaugh?
Yes.
Birmingham?
Yes.
Alright, motion carries. On to item number six, Pruitt Pest Control, PL 2020-00644, a recommendation for conditional use approval. Mr. Kip, over to you.
Good evening. This is a request for a pest control service to be located in the Conference and Development District, CDB. It is located on 1922 Professional Circle. And the property owner is RWP Properties LLC, represented by Parker Lewis, Hifer, and Eric. This is the proposed site plan. It shows an existing office building in a generally office park setting. And a proposed new building consisting of 6,000 square feet of office and 2,000 square feet for, specifically for the pest control service component of the business. The site plan has been through the DRT process and approved. So most of the engineering and kind of design work has been looked at, parking, you know, getting services and utilities to the site have all been looked at and approved. The use in itself matches with the future land use and therefore staff recommends approval. And happy to answer any questions. I did not receive any comments or concerns from the neighborhood.
Okay, thanks. Mr. Lewis, you have anything you'd like to say?
Be happy to answer any questions.
Alright, great, thank you. Okay, this one also requires a public hearing, so I'm going to open the public hearing at this time. So if you'd like to speak on Pruitt Pest Control, please raise your hand. Okay, I'm seeing no one. So I will close the public hearing and ask the commission for a motion or comments, questions, etc.
I'll move to approve if there are no questions. This is Robin.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion?
And that's for staff comments, I think, is it not?
Yes, sir. All staff comments.
Right, okay.
Excuse me.
Um, okay, so we have a motion in the second, no further discussion. Let's have a roll call, please.
Bridges?
Yes.
Chancellor?
Yes.
Jaeger?
Yes.
Lazenby?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
McCord?
Yes.
Reese?
Yeah.
Wrightenbaugh?
Yes.
Birmingham?
Yes.
And motion carries. Item number eight. Or excuse me, item number seven. Arco, Arco Expansion 3, PL 2020-0650, conditional use approval for the expansion of existing industrial use. Ms. Kennedy, or no, excuse me, Ms. Robison, sorry.
This is a request to the existing manufacturing use that is located on the corner of Riley Street and Innovation Drive in the Tech Park South, just south of the, I'm sorry, west of the SIO2. Oh, did I say, sorry, it's Tech Park West. I apologize. And it's just south of the SIO2 distribution warehouse that was just recently recommended for approval. The property was originally approved in 2011. And this is an expansion of approximately 43,000 square feet, which requires them to seek conditional use approval for this expansion. The first conditional use was up to, I think, just over 100,000 square feet. So this expansion trips that. And as the other case, we did not receive any correspondence on this one. And we recommend approval. The applicant's engineer, Mr. Basquen, is on the meeting as well as Mr. Doyle with Bailey Harris.
Okay, Mr. Basquen or Mr. Harris, would you like to say anything?
Be happy to answer any questions.
Alright. Great, thank you. Okay, this requires a public hearing. Open the public hearing at this time. If you'd like to speak on the Arco Expansion number three, please raise your hand. Okay, seeing no one, I'm going to close the public hearing. Ask for a motion or just further discussion from the council. Commission.
I'll make a motion to approve agenda, agenda item seven without any and all staff comments.
Okay.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion on the motion? Okay. Amber, can you give us roll call vote, please?
Bridges?
Yes.
Chancellor?
Yes.
Jaeger?
Yes.
Lazenby?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
McCord?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Wrightenbaugh?
Yes.
Birmingham?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Let's move on to item number eight, Frank's Collision Center, PL 2020-00654, conditional use approval recommendation. Ms. Kennedy?
Yes, good evening. For you is a conditional use approval for a collision center in the corridor redevelopment urban, the CRDU zoning district. Is existing building. You can see the side of the building, but this new road service use would occupy. The other portion of the building is also currently in use for a road service use. But this is in front of you for conditional use because it has been vacant for 12 months. They're seeking approval again. As far as any issues with this use, because the site has been previously used for various road service uses, parking and various things like that are all adequate for this use. The staff is recommending approval. An aerial, the image, you can see all the parking cars discussing. And the representative for tonight is John Tate with Frank's Collision Center. And we've not had any communication regarding this case.
Uh, Mr. Tate, would you care to make any comments?
We just, you know, would love to join the Auburn community and I'm available to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you much.
Yes.
Okay, this requires a public hearing. I'll open the public hearing at this time. If you would like to speak on Frank's Collision Center conditional use, please raise your hand. Okay, seeing no one, I'm going to close the public hearing and turn it over to the commission.
If there are no comments or discussion, I'll make a motion to approve PL 2020-0650. oh, oh, six five four with all staff comments.
Second.
I'm second.
Have a motion in a second. Uh, any further discussion on the motion? Okay, Amber, please do a roll call vote.
Bridges?
Yes, ma'am.
Chancellor?
Yes.
Jager?
Yes.
Lazenby?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
McCord?
Yes.
Reeve?
Yes.
Wright and Ball?
Yes.
Birmingham?
Yes.
Okay, on to item number nine, Auburn Community Church, PL twenty twenty zero six five five. This is a recommendation for conditional use approval. Uh, Mr. Howell?
Yes, this, as you said, it's a conditional use approval for an institutional use located twenty-one oh-two Hamilton Road in the limited development district with the conservation overlay district applied on top. Just as a short administrative note, the boundary actually is a little off on here on the prox map. It actually continues up, it's adjusted over here with a little bit of a landslide on the other side. Uh, the, the property owner, uh, the joint property owner to the east asked me to make sure that was changed.
And you can do that just administratively, no problem?
That's, yeah, it's really just a matter of putting on the prox map. Uh, the site plan reflects, uh, the property lines it used to be, so.
Okay.
The church itself is, sits on sixteen point eight-five acres and did come before you before in December, at your December meeting. And then subsequently the city council, uh, it was approved for rezoning from rural to LDD and got its first conditional use of approval for a church. The conditional use requirements for the ordinance say that it, they're good for eighteen months. And it's been over that since that was, since, since that was initially approved, so they have come back again. Um, however, the zoning, uh, zoning that was requested at the same time was, uh, as obviously states. The current facility is going to be approximately fifty thousand square foot, uh, place of worship. And that with, uh, one thousand two hundred and fifty seats. The current version here does represent some changes from the original, from the original, uh, application two years ago. Uh, let's see. There is a larger setback away from, away from Hamilton Road as compared to the first. And there also is decreased seating capacity. However, there is also an increase in pervious surface area. However, all of it is, uh, still within, still within code. The engineering department has requested a traffic impact study to be updated, uh, prior to any approval. Um, the land use plan designation for this area is, is conservation cluster residential. And, um, the, and that has not changed since, since the two years that it was, uh, first approved. So as such, um, while the proposed use might not be in alignment with the future land use, staff does not feel, uh, feel necessary, feel necessary to make a recommendation to approval or for approval or denial since, uh, it was seen fit to be approved two years ago. But the applicant's representative is on the, is online. I've not received any correspondence for or against the proposal, and staff is open to any of the questions.
Who's, who's the representative?
Parker Lewis.
Oh, Parker Lewis, okay. You have anything you want to say, Mr. Lewis?
I'll be happy to answer any questions.
All right, great, thanks. Okay, this requires a public hearing, so I'm going to open the public hearing at this time. Anybody that would like to speak on the Auburn Community Church conditional use request, please raise your hand. I am seeing no one. So I'm going to close the public hearing. And turn it over to the commission.
Mr. Chairman, I, I wasn't, not able to understand the reason the staff is not making a recommendation. I, I think they stated it, but it just wasn't, didn't come through very clearly.
Mr. Howell? How about re- repeating that?
The staff does not, uh, staff makes recommendations based on the future land use plan when in terms to conditional use requests, rezonings, and other applicable cases. Uh, since the, um, since the future land use plan is still the same now as it was two years ago, however, the zoning district has, uh, has changed. It is not staff does not feel inappropriate to, uh, recommend denial from, recommending denial of the, of the application. However, uh, staff is disinclined to go against the future land use plan also.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, do I have a motion or other discussion?
I've got one other question if, uh.
Go ahead.
In the motion, uh, we, to, whatever the motion is, are we, it, it would include, uh, the outcome of a traffic study, I understand?
Yes, I, uh, he said, you said that, didn't you, Mr. Howell? You mentioned that there would ha- it's contingent upon having a traffic study?
Yes.
Chairman, I'd move for approval item number nine. Uh, with the understanding the conditions of the traffic study would be a made part of this recommendation.
I'm second.
Motion in a second. Do I have any discussion, further discussion on the motion? Okay, Amber, can you give us a roll call vote, please?
Bridges?
Yes.
Chancellor?
Yes.
Jager?
Yes.
Lazenby?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
McCord?
Yes.
Reeve?
Yes.
Wright and Ball?
Yes.
Birmingham?
Yes.
All right, motion carries. Now we're going to move on to other business. It's item number ten, Hamilton Place PDD Conditional Use. Uh, this is a request for a rehearing, um. Um, let's see, what else are we going to mention about? Well, let's go ahead. Mr. Kip, go ahead.
Yes, sir. Uh, as you stated, this is a request for a rehearing. Um, you don't see these too often, but essentially what's before you tonight is a singular request to rehear a previously denied, uh, zoning action. Um, the case, the subject property is a, um, two four four nine Mortimer Road. Also included i- is the Hamilton Place Shopping Center. You heard the requests. There were three requests back in, at your August meeting. Uh, there was a request to rezone property from rural to LDD to amend the Hamilton Place Shopping Center, um, to allow an office use and a site plan for an said office use. The planning commission recommended approval for all three of those cases. Um, at the November city council meeting, uh, only one of the three cases was approved, and that was the rezoning to LDD. The planning, uh, the PDD amendment and the conditional use were not approved. As such, uh, the zoning ordinance provides property owners a, uh, a way to have a case reheard dependent on a significant change, either in the site plan, the circumstances of the case, or the land, um, or some other extenuating circumstance. So the, uh, property representative, property owner's representative is Brett Basman. And he has submitted a letter, uh, to us, kind of describing those, the circumstances of the property that have changed. Um, he has submitted a revised master development plan. A revised site plan showing the office use. And here are the, the original to see the, the changes. And the principal change being a added street as one of the major, uh, changes. Uh, the square footage of the office use has not changed. It's still thirty-three thousand square feet. Um, and essentially what's before you is a request to make a determination if this is a significant change and if it warrants a rehearing um, at a, a separate regular meeting of the, of the commission.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Basman. Want to say?
Uh, yeah, I just, uh, happy to answer any questions, but, uh, we feel this is a substantial change based upon comments and responses we've heard during the, uh, city council process.
Okay. All right, thank you. So this does not require a public hearing, and this is, um, and I'd like to just remind that we're strictly, um, uh, based deliberating on the, whether we want to hear this case again due to the, the substantial change. And so it's, it's limited to that. That's all we're looking at here. So was there any, uh, questions, comments, or emotions from the commission?
Mr. Chairman, we're, we're not making any uh, comment, uh, about the approval or denial of, of the site plan itself. W- w- we're just
No.
approving, uh, a rehearing if, if we may.
Right, it, it, just the simple, the fact that if, if this constitutes enough change for us to rehear it. That's what we're looking at.
And by agreeing to rehear it, places no obligation on us to approve or disapprove it.
Yes.
That's good. That's the point I was making. And with that understanding, I, I would, uh, move that we allow rehearing based on a substantial change.
I second that.
Okay, I have a motion in a second. Is there any, uh, further discussion on that motion? All right, Amber, can you give us a roll call vote?
Bridges?
Yes.
Chancellor?
Yes.
Jager?
Yes.
Lazenby?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
McCord?
Yes.
Reeve?
Yes.
Wright and Ball?
No.
Birmingham?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries, and that's the last item on the agenda. And I'd like to just, uh, have a little bit of chairman's communication here real quick. Um, I'd like to just recognize, um, Jay Howell, uh, the planning staff for his, uh, work and his service work with the, uh, American Planning Association. He's been part of a, uh, we've, we've been, uh, there's, we've had, we have access to their conference this year. They're having a joint Mississippi and Alabama Conference of the APA. Uh, it's been very interesting. I've been able to get in and out of a number of different things there, and so I'd just like to recognize Jay for that because, you know, service to your professional organizations, it makes you a better planner. So way to go on that, and, uh, hope everybody that's been able to see some of these things has, has found it useful to do that. Um, over to staff, any staff communication?
I cannot think of any.
Okay, all right. Well, we stand adjourned. Thank you, everybody. We'll see you next time. Merry Christmas and happy new year.
Merry Christmas.
Happy holidays to all.
All right.
Merry Christmas.
Take care, y'all.